Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Before we commence tonight's meeting, we have a special guest. Dominic Dunn will lead us in a prayer before the pledge. Dominic is a seventh grade student at R.K. Smith Middle School and is from Hornville, Louisiana. He's an honor roll student, a proud member of the Beta Club and the R.K. Smith Football Team. Dominic plans to be a future software engineer. Following the prayer, District Six Board Member, Mrs. Becky Weber, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone that's able, please stand.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our board members tonight with wisdom as they make sound decisions that will affect the lives of future generations. Guide their hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness so that they can make sound and innovative decisions on behalf of the students and parents, students, parents, and employees of the St. Charles Parish Public School System. I ask that you bless everybody that is in attendance as we strive to make St. Charles Parish Public Schools the best in the country. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the God of the United States of America, into the Republic of which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
St. Charles Parish Public School Board Meeting for October 23rd is called to order. Let the record show that all board members are present, as well as Superintendent Ortling and our Secretary, Ms. Shelley Babanel. First item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is a resolution in memory of Ms. Melissa Gore. And I'm going to ask Mr. Gregson to read that memoriam.
Sure, absolutely. Resolution in memory of Ms. Melissa Gore. Whereas Ms. Melissa Gore was a teacher in the St. Charles Parish Public School System for fifteen and a half years, and whereas Ms. Gore also served as a mentor and coach for various sports and group activities. Therefore, be resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Melissa Gore its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow. And be it further resolved that a page in the October 23rd, 2024 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of the resolution be presented to Ms. Gore's family. Mr. President, I move that we approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Is there a second? Who made this? Mr. Suffren, second to the motion. Is there any additional discussion? If not, please cast your vote on the resolution in memory of Ms. Melissa Gore. The resolution in memory of Ms. Melissa Gore is unanimously approved. Is there anyone from Mrs. Gore's family here to receive the resolution? Next item on our agenda is National Principals Month Proclamation. I'm going to ask Mrs. Boudreau to read that resolution, that proclamation.
National Principals Month Proclamation. Whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board has declared the month of October 2024 as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And whereas principals are expected to be instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to maintain high curriculum standards and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board honors such exemplary elementary and secondary-level public school leaders committed to serving students from pre-kindergarten to grades 12. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board recognizes outstanding elementary, middle, and high school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession. And now therefore be it resolved that in honor of the service of all principals and to celebrate school leader accomplishments, the month of October 2024 is hereby designated in St. Charles Parish to be National Principals Month. Mr. President, I move that we adopt this proclamation.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Boudreau and a second by Mrs. Weber. Is there any additional discussion?
Mr. President, I want to ask that Dr. David Schecksnier come to the microphone to recognize our principals. And as he's making his way to the podium, I just want to say, you know, how proud I am to serve alongside so many great leaders of our schools. To all our principals sitting in the back, thank you for your leadership, your unwavering commitment to excellence, to our communities, to our schools, and most importantly, to our students. We know the work that you do each and every day is the cornerstone of our education school system. And we know it's difficult, but what we also know is one of the most rewarding jobs that there are. So thank you for your commitment to excellence and your commitment to this school system. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. David Schecksnier.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Please join me in recognizing... This one? Oh, sorry. Please join me in recognizing our amazing school principals. Principals, as your name is called, please come to the front to be recognized and remain until all principals have been called and we take a group picture. Head Startin' Four-Year-Old Programs, Nikki Weber. Alamon's Elementary School, Lisa Perrin. Mimosa Park Elementary School, Angie Butler. New Sarpy Elementary School, Rebecca Matherne. Luling Elementary School, Carol Bowie Cotton. Norco Elementary School, Shannon Deodnay. St. Rose Elementary School, Shonda Harris. Lakewood Elementary School, Kelly Ortling. RJ Viall Elementary School, Christina Mullins. Ethel Scheffner Elementary School, Vanessa Terry. Albert Cameron Middle School, Dr. Gabrielle Delott. Harry Hurst Middle School, Sean Dwyer. JB Martin Middle School, Stephen Guitarras. R.K. Smith Middle School, Harold Blood. Destrehan High School, Jason Maudair. Hornville High School, Jose Gonzalez. E.J. Landry Senior Educational Program Center, Ingrid Brass. Satellite Center, Elaine Fitzgerald. Let's give these amazing leaders a round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling and Schecksnier. Doctors, is there any more board discussion? If not, please cast your vote.
Mr. President, I just want to say, we look forward to celebrating all our principals tomorrow night at the Principal Swarway, Swaray, and especially our Principal of the Year, Ms. Becky Matherne from New Sarpy Elementary School.
The National Principals Month Proclamation is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is Red Ribbon Week Proclamation, and I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Cody to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Red Ribbon Week Proclamation. Whereas all children in St. Charles Parish are entitled to attend a school free of drugs and violence, and whereas we are committed to nurturing the full potential of St. Charles Parish youth, and whereas the Department of Education and statewide drug-free schools and communities personnel believe in and strive for a school environment free of drugs and violence, and whereas all citizens of St. Charles Parish join with the teachers, administrators, and parishes and state officials in encouraging our youth to become productive citizens and to maintain healthy lifestyles. And whereas the 2024 Red Ribbon Week theme is "Life is a Movie: Film Drug-Free," now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board does hereby support October 23rd through the 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its school officials to participate in drug awareness activities and be strongly committed to drug-free, healthy lifestyles. Mr. President, I move that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Cody, second by Mr. Oakway. Is there any discussion? Any comments, Dr. Ortling?
No, but obviously our schools will be participating in activities starting on October 23rd through 31st to bring awareness to all of our students and families.
Thank you. If there isn't any more discussion, please cast your vote on the Red Ribbon Week Proclamation. This year's Red Ribbon Week Proclamation is unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is Board and Superintendent's Recognition. Ms. Cannon.
Students. Hornville High School student is a National Merit Scholar semifinalist, Brayden Genius. High school students were named to an LHSAA All Academic Composite Team. Destrehan High School's Ian Metos Sosa. Hornville High School's Brayden Genius. Amelia Meir. Sydney Troxler. Lakewood Elementary School employee is a 2024 Shell Science Lab Regional Challenge winner. Here to present her to the board is Ms. Katie Mitchell, Corporate Relations Advisor at Shell Norco.
Hey, y'all. Rochelle couldn't make it out tonight, so I have some big shoes to fill, I know. At Shell, our goal is to provide opportunities for more robust and innovative science, education, and lab experiences in schools near our assets. We have once again partnered with the National Science Teachers Association to award science lab curriculum, materials, and professional development to schools and science teachers that best demonstrated their ability to improve science achievement for students. The ability to foster creativity through hands-on experiences and these additional resources, we believe will enable students to develop a problem-solving mindset that will lead to the energy solutions of the future. The Shell Science Lab Regional Challenge winner received a School Science Lab Makeover Support Package valued at $15,000 and an opportunity to advance to the national phase of the competition. Tonight, I am honored to recognize the following school and their outstanding teacher. Lakewood Elementary School, teacher Taylor Boudreau and Principal Kelly Ortling. This is Taylor's second time receiving this honor, so congratulations.
At this time, it's customary that we take a short break to allow anyone who might want to leave to do so at this time. So we'll take a couple of minutes break. Next item on our agenda is item 4.01, Expulsion Appeal.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we remand 4.01 back to administration.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Oakway and has Mr. Suffren at second?
Yes.
To remain back to the administration. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The motion to remand back, to remain to the administration, the expulsion appeal of student number one is unanimously approved. Next item is 4.02, Expulsion Appeal of Student Number Two. As per, excuse me, as per Louisiana Revised Statute 17:416(c)(3(b)(4), the school board may review expulsion decisions and choose to affirm, reverse, or modify the actions previously taken by the superintendent or the superintendent's designate. The members of the board met as an ad hoc committee on Monday, October 21st, at the request of student number two's mother to consider her request of the board to review the decision to expel student number two and the resulting sanctions. The members of the St. Charles Parish School Board need to consider and then act upon the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. Is there a recommendation? Is there a recommendation?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanction of student number two.
Have a motion by Mr. Oakway, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boudreau, is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Have a unanimous vote by the board to approve the ad hoc committee recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanctions of student number two. Next item, 4.03, Expulsion Appeal of Student Number Three. Is there a recommendation from the ad hoc committee?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanction of student number three.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Oakway, second by Mr. Gregson, is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The motion to approve the ad hoc committee recommendation to affirm the expulsion and sanction of student number three is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.04, Board Minute Meetings. Board Meetings Minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from September 16th, 2024 Committee Meeting Minutes and September 18th, Board, September 18th, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes, the meeting minutes as noted.
A motion by Mr. Suffren, is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. A second by Mrs. Weber, is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The minutes from those two board meetings is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.05, Request for Qualifications for Flood and Property Insurance Brokerage. In order to receive the most qualified brokerage services, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is seeking qualifications from firms to provide flood and property insurance brokerage services. The Risk Management and Benefits Department solicits brokers on a three-year cycle, and we are in year three of that cycle, of the current cycle. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting on Monday, October 21st, 2024, and is aligned with goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the RFQ for flood and property insurance brokerage.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cody and a second by Mr. Oakway, is there any board discussion? Or comments from the superintendent? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.05, Request for Qualifications for Flood and Property Insurance Brokerage is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.06, Purchase of Faithful Performance Bonds. Next item, 4.06 purchase of faithful performance bonds. Per memorandum of understanding with the St. Charles Parish government, the St. Charles Parish School Board must provide a bond for the parish and school board tax collector. The school board receives, quote, received quotes from CNA Surety for faithful performance bond covering the tax collector. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the board on Monday, October 21st, and is aligned with goal D of our strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of faithful performance bonds for the tax collector from SNA Surety at a cost of $450, although I will note that the parish government will ultimately pick up half of that cost.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Is there a second? I have a motion by Mr. Cody and a second by Mrs. Weber, is there any board discussion? The board unanimously approved the purchase of faithful performance bonds for the tax collector from SNA Surety. Our next item on the agenda is 4.07 change order number two for J.B. Martin Middle School Elevator Edition Project.
Mr. President, I move that we consent agenda items 4.07 to 4.11.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gregson and a second by Mr. Cody to consent agenda, the following items, I'm going to read them. 4.07 change order number two for J.B. Martin Middle School Elevator Project at a cost of, is there a cost on there?
What's the order of days?
I'm sorry, it's just, it's just more, more days, no, no cost, okay. And also, 4.08 is the ratification of substantial completion for that elevator addition project. It also, this motion also includes 4.09 ratification of substantial completion Destrahan High School and Hornville High School Baseball and Softball Turf Project. Item 4.10 change order number two for Destrahan High School Career and Technical Education Facility.
Credit 350.
And that's a credit of $350? And also, the last item, substantial completions for the Destrahan High School Career and Technical Education Facility. So I have a motion and a second, there's no discussion on this, and this motion also includes approving all of these items at the same time, and it requires unanimous vote. This motion has passed.
Mr. President, the previous vote was to actually do the consent agenda. This one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the five consent agenda items, actually approve these items 4.07, 4.08, 4.09, 4.10, and 4.11.
Mr. Gregson, maybe I didn't explain it correctly, but the motion to consent was also a motion to approve all of the items, so it has passed.
Can we double check that? I just want to make sure we got it right.
Yeah, no.
If you don't mind, thank you.
I researched how that works on Tuesday, and when you consent, you're actually bundling a group of agenda items and making a motion to approve at the same time.
Thanks for the clarification, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item is 4.12 bid exceptions for Destrahan High School AAA Alumni Center Project. The construction budget for the Destrahan High School AAA Alumni Center budget, project budget includes, which, a new ticket booth is $3,250,000. Bids were received from eight contractors on Tuesday, October 15th. The lowest bid, base bid, was received by Lamar Contractors LLC in the amount of $4,176,380. The architect, lowest bidder's bidding contractor and district's administration is currently value engineering the project and anticipates an estimate cost reduction of $300,000. Once the value engineering process is complete, a deductive change order for this project will be prepared and presented at an upcoming board meeting. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, October 21st, and is aligned with goal E of the board's strategic action plan.
What's the print? Motion, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the lowest base bid by Lamar Contractors LLC for the Destrahan High School AAA Alumni Center Project.
Have a motion by Mr. Gregson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Boudreaux, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask Dr. Ordling, for the public's benefit, if he would provide a brief description of the building, the purpose of its use, location, et cetera.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Sufferin, I'll be glad to do that. The Destrahan High School AAA Alumni Center will be located adjacent to the football field, and the Hamba High School AAA Alumni Center will also be adjacent to Hamba High School's football field. And these centers really represent our ongoing commitment to the excellence, our commitment to excellence in the academics, arts, and athletics, the core areas that really shape our students' future and the system's success. The AAA Alumni Centers at both of our schools will serve as a multipurpose, really versatile hub for various events and activities. These spaces will be used for special classes at our high schools, student and staff training sessions, a professional testing environment for students, and meeting spaces for athletic events such as track meets, co-curricular festivals, and ROTC drill competitions. Additionally, there will be banquet spaces for academic clubs, athletic, and co-curricular teams to utilize in lieu of running out spaces for more community. We also envision spaces within the centers hosting theater systems, schools during contests, and also utilize for district-wide or school-specific professional development opportunities. The spaces will also be used as art galleries, or perhaps also discussed during the stakeholder engagement process, dinner theater experiences, and a unique place to showcase and celebrate the achievements of our students, both past and present, in all facets of school life. By bringing together students, alumni, and community members, these AAA Alumni Centers located at both of our high schools will highlight our rich history and hopefully inspire future generations to continue the tradition of excellence in the academics, athletics, and the arts. And we are thrilled to see these projects come to life for additional use in the many benefits to our school system, community, and students.
Is there any more discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to note that, and it was mentioned in here, as you mentioned in the background rationale, that it is, the one in Destrahan is a few hundred square feet larger than Hornville, but that's because it has a ticket booth on the back left corner, if I'm looking at it from, looking at the football field, per se. And also, just make note, if, just even within the state of Louisiana, we're not the first to build something like this. We might call it, I don't know what others call it, but we're certainly not, not the first, and just want to make note of that, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson, any more discussion? Agenda item 4.12 bid acceptance for Destrahan High School AAA Alumni Center Project is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.13 bid acceptance for the Hornville High School AAA Alumni Center Project. And this construction, the construction budget for the Hornville High School AAA Alumni Center Project is $3,250,000. Bids were received from eight contractors on Thursday, October 17th. The lowest bid, including alternate number one and alternate number two, was received from Spartan Building Corporation in the amount of $3,723,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, and accepting the lowest base bid include, including alternate number one and alternate number two will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was received at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, October 21st, and is aligned with goal E of the board's strategic action.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Gregson, any discussion? Item 4.13 bid acceptance, Hornville High School AAA Alumni Center Project is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is 4.14 personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on Monday, October 21st, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we receive the personnel items as presented to the board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody, to receive the personnel items as presented to the board. Is there any discussion, Mr. Dr. Ordling?
Mr. President, thank you. We do have a couple of recognitions or appointments tonight that are in our audience I'd like to make special recognition. First, Ms. April Gomez is being appointed as Administrator of Head Start. Mr. Edward Moore is the Director of Performing Arts Center. And Ms. Nicole Weber is the Director of Early Childhood Education. Congratulations to these leaders, we can't wait to see what impact you're going to have in the environment that you're in, thank you.
If there's no more discussion, please cast your vote Item 4.14 personnel items is unanimously approved by the board. Next item, 4.15 revisions to board policy 1.4.1, school board meetings notification and public media, and notifications to public and the media.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the recommended revisions to board policy 1.4.1, school board meetings notification to the public and media for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody, is there any board discussion or comments from the superintendent? Item 4.15 is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.16 revision to board policy 4.6.5, overtime compensation, second reading, and adoption. This item was reviewed and accepted for the first reading at the meeting of the board on Wednesday, September 18th, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the recommended revisions to board policy 4.6.5, overtime compensation for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody, any board discussion or superintendent comments? Item 4.16 revisions to board policy 4.6.5, overtime compensation for a second reading and adoption is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.17 revisions to board policy 1.2.2, qualifications for school board members, second reading and adoption. This item was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the board on Wednesday, September 18th, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the recommended revisions to board policy 1.2.2, qualifications of school board members for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Cody, is there any board discussion or comments from the superintendent? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.17 revisions to board policy 1.2.2, qualifications for, of school board members, second reading and adoption is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.18, 2025-2026 school session calendar, first reading. School board policy mandates that the school board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee comprised of school board members, a business and industry representative, central office administrators, principals, teachers, parents, and students prepare the calendar for board approval in accordance with policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be disseminated to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee meeting on Monday, October 21 and is aligned with goals A and F of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the proposed 2025-2026 school session calendar for a first reading.
Is a motion by Mr. Oakway? Is there a second by Mrs. Weber? Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would just like to point out that this, for the public, they actually had two different surveys, public information, thanks to Ms. Cannon and Ms. McMillan. They put this out for a second survey to the public, so two opportunities. And last thing to note is, you do have offer number first, unless you go into Saturday School.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Any more discussion?
I just want to give special recognition to Mr. Jason Mader, Principal Destrehan High School, for leading this calendar committee this year.
Any more discussion? Not, please cast your vote. The 2025-2026 school session calendar is unanimously approved for a first reading. Next item, 4.19, state-funded differentiated compensation stipends. The Louisiana Legislature has appropriated funds for public school districts to pay differentiated compensation stipends to teachers who qualify on the guidelines established by the state, including mentor teachers and teacher leaders. The district will use the state allocated funds to pay its mentor teachers and our teacher leaders in accordance with the district's salary schedule during the 2024-2025 school year. Any unused funds may be used during the 2025-2026 school year. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, October 21 and is aligned with goals C and D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the state-funded differentiated compensation stipends as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gregson, and who's second?
Mr. Sufferin.
Mr. Sufferin. This new layout we have is hard to keep track of who's voting. Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.19, state-funded differentiated compensation stipends is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.20, accounts payable for the month of September 2024. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting on Monday, October 6.
It's actually 21st.
On Monday, the 21st, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of September 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.20, accounts payable for the month of September is unanimously approved. And I don't know if it was stated, but that amount is That brings us to our closing items, starting with 5.01, standing committee reports. Any chairman of a standing committee may give a report to the board at this time.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee, made up of myself, Ms. Boudreaux, Mr. Sufferin, met on Monday, October 21. We discussed two items, which were just approved, and four point, items 4.19 and 4.20, and the state-funded differentiated compensation stipends and accounts payable for the month of September 2024. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Anyone else?
As the Chair of Technology, I just want to shout out the Technology Department for recreating a boardroom inside the PLC. This is amazing. We'll figure out the delays another time, but this is great. Thank you.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Alexander, and Mr. Cody, held a meeting on Monday, October 21, and we covered two items. The personnel items were received by the committee on Monday and by the full board this evening. The other item for committee discussion only was that staff presented an update from the USDA audit of child nutrition that was conducted back in March of 2024 and subsequent necessary minor changes to that policy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. Anyone else? That brings us to the Capital Improvements Committee, which comprises of Vice President Mr. Smith, Mr. Gregson, and myself. We had a meeting on Monday, and there were seven items on the agenda. And each of those items came before the board tonight and was all approved unanimously, I believe. And that concludes my report. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The website NISH.com releases 2025 rankings of best schools and school districts in the country. This recognition takes into account more than just test scores. The 2025 rankings have St. Charles Parish Public Schools as the number three best school district in Louisiana, earning the number one spot in almost every category in the New Orleans area. These noteworthy rankings highlight the shared commitment of our students, employees, and community and its expectation of excellence. Number one best school district in the New Orleans area, number one best school district for athletes in the New Orleans area, number two in Louisiana, number one most diverse school district in the New Orleans area, number four in Louisiana, number one district with the best teachers in the New Orleans area, number seven in Louisiana, and number two best places to teach in the New Orleans area, and number six in Louisiana. This information will be shared with the community on our social media pages and website. This recognition is a credit to the strong leadership of our board, our students' hard work, our employees' dedication, and our community's support of its public education school system. You can view our complete rankings at NISH.com. The Satellite Center is hosting an open house and community showcase on November 14 from 5 to 7 p.m. This event is open to the community, and attendees can speak with current students and teachers to learn about the courses offered and tour the facility. Attendees are also invited to attend a smoking and vaping prevention presentation by our community partner, Ochsner, and interact with exhibits and demonstrations provided by Access Health, We Made, and Catch My Breath. We look forward to showcasing the opportunities awaiting students who choose to attend the Satellite Center. We hope to see you Thursday. As a reminder, daylight savings ends on November 4 at 2 a.m. Remember to set your clocks back an hour. And finally, as Halloween approaches, we want to remind our students to stay safe while enjoying the evening. It's important to keep your parents, guardians, or other trusted adult cell phone numbers with you in case you feel uncomfortable with your surroundings or the actions of those around you. Additionally, be mindful of the permanency of social media and picture sharing. Anything posted or sent can have lasting consequences. Remember, your future is bright, so don't let one night of fun compromise it. And if you feel frightened or threatened, don't hesitate to contact the sheriff's office or police. Stay safe and happy Halloween. And finally, I want to echo Ms. Boudreaux's sentiments relative to our Technology Department, but also our PLC attendance, in addition to our Secretary, Ms. Shelley Babino. They all really facilitated such a nice evening here. It took a lot of work to put together. So I definitely want to make sure that they're recognized. Thank you for recognizing them, Ms. Boudreaux.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Ordeling.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask for a personal privilege to Honorable School Board Member from District 7. I'd like to extend a happy birthday to Mr. Otto Quinn.
Now can I move to adjourn?
I think we had Ray last week. We got Al Sunday and Dr. Ordeling.
No, can't move. Not saying it again. I move to adjourn. Someone's second.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Boudreaux. Second by Mrs. Weber. Meeting adjourned.